Thank you, sir. Okay, I'd like to start with the, uh, when the school board meetings, September 7th, 2016. And we'll start with a roll call on my part.
Heather Furlong, school board. Oh. Heather. Hold up.
Kate O'Connor, school board secretary.
Heather Furlong, school board.
Troy Garland, school board.
Sean Tarr, school board.
Paul Stern, school board.
April Royce, school board.
Kelly Wessels, business administrator.
Thank you, Terrence.
Terrence Yerkes.
Jody Bergen, principal, Sunapee Central Elementary School.
You can read us some questions.
And Sean Wyhan's here, he's getting some information. And then he'll be right back. Um, okay, we'll do this in a couple of minutes, please.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a moment of silence. Okay, we'll move right on to approval of the August 17th, 2016 minutes. And someone will make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 17th, 2016 minutes.
Okay, motion number, how is it?
The second.
Second, if you want. And, so, I also have a revision. Someone would like to put a request on that. And the revision is non-bearing on anything that was discussed. We mean, we don't, at last minute, and you don't do any, uh, we're not doing any minutes of debate themselves. Um, we really haven't been bearing on what we're going to be recording on tonight, so. Uh, requests. All right. Okay, do we have any discussion?
What was the request?
The request, the request was, if someone would like to, or Mr. Porter would like to put in the minutes that, um, that I had made a statement saying that we do not put, um, that I put everything on the agenda. And he asked to put an evaluation, the board evaluation on this time around, and I said we do it once a year. And I said, there's no reason to bring it back up again. I said, once a year is what we do, that's the way the policy is, so we're not going to, this specific, bring it back. His request was saying that, well, I asked, his request, I want to have it on the agenda. And we've got it on, so I, I didn't hide it, so.
And that's done in, is it April?
Yes.
On the evaluation, so I got.
His specific request was that during the second public forum, um, he made a statement in front of his seat regarding being United Access to the, Mr. Cal said, no one's denied access to the agenda, Mr. Trump missed it. Porter responded that he felt that he had denied.
Based on this?
Right.
Right, so but by.
And it's a non-imprenial access, is what it is, it's not, so. Okay.
So, the board evaluations, the last one that were done was the old board, so that's why the new one will be done.
Well, his request is to put the revision, to put that request on the agenda.
Oh, the board on the agenda.
In the minutes, and it doesn't need to be in the minutes, because it has nothing to do with the minutes. So, and that's why, I'm saying, I mean, what he'd like to do is, he would like to bring it back on, and I'm, he's making a statement saying that I'm denying anything that goes on the, um, agenda, and that's not.
Would it be more beneficial to amend the minutes, saying that the request was made and it was, um, not put on the agenda because of that reason?
No, because you're not doing it for later, you're doing it for later minutes, and it'd be one thing.
Yeah, well, and we have the video now, so we can.
And this is to clarify, because again, it's about this comment that was made during the second public forum.
Oh, not about the actual, yeah.
Not about the evaluation, it's about the evaluation.
I got you.
Sean, the question.
No, I, I was going to say too, um, if somebody, I'm not, people aren't getting up and talking for the request, and they're in the seat, I'm not going to put it into the minutes, because that's not an actual part of the.
Exactly.
So.
Okay. So, anything, anybody have any, anything else on the minutes? Here, none, all is, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extensions? Okay, agenda revisions. One revision.
Sorry, um, that, uh, only club proposal.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Wyhan's. I'm sorry. You're going to be talking about that one?
Only club proposal.
Yes. Okay. Is that the only other revision? Okay. Great, public forum. Um, now's the time for public forum, and again, I'd like to make sure that people do follow the policy we have, and if they'd like to talk, or to bring something forward, they've got to be speaking towards each other. And I'd welcome anybody to like to do that. Okay, special ed, we're going to move on.
Nope.
Oh, yeah.
My name is Alice Josephs. I'm wondering if the public has any input into agenda items for, um, subsequent meetings or for present meetings?
Yes, it is in the policy, and the policy states that you get a hold of the superintendent, superintendent, in that point, we get a hold of the, you have two avenues, you can either talk to the chair or the superintendent. We generally relate, Russ, go to the superintendent, the superintendent can find out what, uh, or what's, what is the substance of the rationale, or what, what they want to come forward. Because there are some personal issues as to that, and he would like to at least talk about, to make sure that, um, you know, what's coming forward is. Okay, so we, basically, he would like to discuss that, and then he'll talk over me, and then we'll get, uh, we can get on the agenda. The other thing too is, at the, um, at the back, there is a policy. All the policies are online, but we have a policy for that. It's in the back of the book, you know, what the agendas are. So, everybody's welcome to have it in hardcover, hard form.
Okay.
Thank you.
And do we have a link to it at the school website too, right?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Okay, special education.
John Branley, Westwood Road, resident and a voter. And I'm still a little new at this, I just want some clarification. On the action items, you've got a bunch of things in here that you're going to approve. Are we allowed to comment on those at the time you're discussing those, or no?
No. No, you can comment on the, that's why we do have a public forum at the end, if someone would like to bring something forward at that point.
But if you've already approved them, and then what's the purpose of a public forum after you've approved them?
We do have one now, but I, if you'd like to comment on any one of those things, you can comment on it now.
Okay, but I don't know enough about it, other than what it just states there. So, I'd like to hear, you know, your discussion on it, and then have input on it, but I don't know enough about it to make a comment on it now.
Right.
But I don't want to comment on it after you approve it.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Well, I guess then I'll take a wild stab at it, okay? Uh, action item D, approve the proposed transfer of up to $200,000 from the special education fund to the operating budget. Again, I don't know what it means other than that. As a taxpayer, I'd like to see you take the $200,000 and give it back to the citizens, that's about 60 bucks a citizen.
Okay.
So, instead of moving it from one fund to another, if you don't need it, give it back to the taxpayers.
Okay.
And if I'm misinterpreting that, you know, feel free to clarify me, but I don't know what it is other than what it states.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Paul Manson, Young Hill Road. Um, do we know what the $200,000's going to be moved for, what the purpose of the move is?
We're going to discuss it at the action item, but if you'd like to give us some input, you can give us some input.
We're just wondering what it's for, what are you going to use it for?
Okay.
And why don't you need it in the special ed fund? Um, we're under the understanding that we need to keep that at a pretty healthy rate in case we have kids coming in.
Thanks. Thank you for your input. We are going to discuss it during.
That was actually, that was actually a question.
Thank you.
So, you don't know what you're doing with it?
Yeah, we do, during the, uh, action item, um, we're able to be discussing it.
Okay, the ribbon elders move forward.
Typically around this time, I bring to you our district data profiles. The schools come to you and are able to share their information about test scores and things like this, and this is special ed version of test scores. So, I'm going to do my best to explain the most critical components of that. You'll see that this is 14, 15 data, so this is a, essentially, just over a year old. That is the most recent information that we, we have. As I said, this is our testing, essentially, and it's, the Office of Special Education Programs is charged with monitoring and improving, um, outcomes for all children with disabilities. They measure the state, and the state measures us, and so those four will go backward. Um, but this Office of Special Education Programs dictates what we're measured on and how we're measured. So, our first two indicators are our graduation rate and dropout rate. As you can see, actually, let me back up for a second. What you should know about all of these numbers, on good or bad, is this is all a numbers game. So, this may be two, this may represent two students, this may represent three students, it may represent each student. So, you have to keep that in mind as we go through here, for good and for bad. But graduation rate is 100% for students with disabilities, and our dropout rate is 0% for students with disabilities, and that exceeds state expectations. Participation and performance of students with disability on statewide assessments. We, our participation rate is 90%, um, the state's target is 91%, so we're, we're right where we need to be. This is the part, honestly, that I'm most proud of. Our proficiency rate on state testing. The state average for reading is 19% of the students in the state, students with disabilities in the state are proficient in reading, and our, 28% of ours are. And the same is true with math, the state average is 13%. Rates of suspension and expulsion, we don't have any discrepancy between the rate at which our gen population and the rate at which our special ed population have suspensions and expulsions. Eighty-seven and a half, I know, and a half of our students are, spent 80% or more of their day in regular classroom. The state averages 72.3%. Forty percent or less in a regular classroom is zero. The data says we had 0% in separate schools. That's not the case, and I have reached out to the state to get that clarified. We would actually be higher than that particular area because our, especially at the time, our resources were limited for what we could do for more involved students. And our number would be substantially lower than, this would put it at 12 and a half percent, if the calculation were correct. And then all of our preschool age students are in a regular early intervention program, and that's the least, we're always going for the least restrictive environment. We want them to be in the place that they can be successful, that allows them to be with their typical peers most often. Preschool performance. All of our students, 100% of our students made substantial growth in social, emotional, communication, and, um, early literacy skills and behavior. 100% were within age-appropriate limits for social, emotional skills by the conclusion of this reporting period. And this is, again, this is one of those places that, that it only tells a little piece of the story. Only 50% of our students were functioning within age expectations in communication or literacy and behavior. The student av, the, the average for the state is 60%. So, really, big picture, if we had a larger cell size, it would likely show something a little different, but that's how we do it. Care and involvement for this particular year wasn't assessed, not because of something we did, but because of the way the state ran it at the time. We don't have any issue with disproportionate representation, so that just means, are we over-identifying kids, are we under-identifying kids? Are we, are we calling every student having a specific, wearing a disability, or do we have more students identified, social, emotional disability, um, based on race or ethnicity? It's just looking at what are our averages compared to the gen typical peers. Timeliness of evaluations, 100% of our students had an evaluation completed within 45 days of project design. This early intervention piece, um, this was hard for me, right up here, I won't lie. We had one student, and their IEP was not developed by the time they turned three. Even going back to research what the story behind that was, the process actually was followed. So, if we get in a referral from early intervention, we have to have evaluated that student, have an IEP meeting, have a working placement, and have placed that student by the time they're three years old. And this says it didn't happen. So, let me tell you a few things. The student turned three, um, after the start of school year, the student came to preschool, first day of school, and, um, the IEP meeting was attempted to be scheduled multiple times, and the parents delayed the process. That's all been documented. And so, the state, um, came in and did a review, and actually found us fully in compliance, because they said our processes are in place, and that it was a snafu in the process, essentially, but it was not in basically. Probably more information than you wanted to know, but I do feel like you need to understand. Post-secondary planning, that wasn't reassessed this year. We actually will be going through post-secondary planning audit this year. The state will come in and they'll grab, um, three or four files of students who are 16 or older, and this is really looking at, are we preparing them for post-secondary? Preparing them to go onto college or career? What services do we have in place to ensure that they can be successful moving forward? And then, post-school outcomes, we don't have enough people. At the end of the day, that's, that gives, um, that contributes a lot. And so, post-school outcomes is a survey that gets sent to graduates. And so, you're hoping that somebody in college or that has just moved a year out of school responds to a survey, which most of the time is. And that's it. So, if you have any questions? I'll move to the bathroom. All right.
Start with Jody.
It's been a great start to the school year. The Thursday night before school started, we had our third annual family night, which is kind of an open house that we have before school starts. It really eases the first day for all of our new students, our kindergarteners. All of the classrooms are open, so they can go in, they can see their classroom, they can see where their hubbies are, they can see some of their classmates. So, it really makes, uh, it lessens the anxiety for the first day of school. Um, we have a food truck, the PTO has games, raffle prizes, and, um, this year we had a dunk tank, and Mr. Royce and Mr. Cooney were good sports about that, and a couple of parents as well. So, that was, we had almost 90% of our parents, our families show up for that night. Great beginning of school, we do have 25 new students this year, um, eight of them tuition, for a total of 159 total students, and we did have seven withdrawals over the summers, some of those were all relocations. Um, our PTO is gearing up for the chowder challenge on September 25th, and this year it's going to be a chowder chili challenge, to have a little variety, and that is their major fundraiser for the year, so, um, they're looking for a lot of support on that. And we have our homework club and chess club starting next week, well, the homework club started this week, chess week, chess club's going to start in a couple weeks, and we are looking for destination imagination coaches, because we have lots of students interested.
Okay, Sean.
Okay, busy, busy beginning of the year. Uh, for the eighth straight year, we had a special first day activity. Uh, this year we have breakout rooms where students and teachers are locked in a room, given clues to try to get out. Some succeeded, some did not. And it went with our motto of the year, just keep trying. Fifty minutes can be somewhat difficult. I did not do it, uh, this time, but I can tell you, um, I did with a group of teachers last year, and not surprising, their group did not break out, so it was kind of frustrating fifty minutes, but, uh, those are the motto, keep trying. It's a nice day where the students go many, um, periods, get a little information on the, on what expected for classes, and have some fun activities in the afternoon. So, really good event. Uh, we have a mini college fair tomorrow at the beginning of the year. Uh, what we typically do is have New Hampshire schools come in, um, and provide information for our students, and then we usually take them out to larger college fairs, they either go to New Hampshire or something, sure. Uh, and then we have open house tomorrow night, from 6:30 to 8:30.
Not much to add, just, again, very opening, first couple days here with faculty, special ed, I picked Austin Green, as well as faculty sort of at hands at night, all attended. Um, again, to those to Matt and his crew for getting the building ready. A little extra time in on Saturday and Sunday, they're following the LED lights, that needed to be replaced, but everything got up and it looks great, and we're happy to be back. And since our last meeting, a lot of, just working on what's going to be in front of you tonight, which hasn't been before.
Okay, we move on to proposed policies, first reading. Um, the, the, I guess I'll let you take the chair.
Well, Russ, I'm going to let you handle the board officer, you're a little familiar with why this policy needs to be brought forward.
A little closer at home, huh?
I wasn't intentional. You explained it to me, so it's easier to consider.
Real, real simple, uh, quote to remember in March, when the board goes through elections, um, I generally open that meeting, um, and from that point, I take nominations to elect the chair. Uh, based upon a situation that happened in Alton in New Hampshire this year, um, there was a two-two tie, there was a member missing, superintendent opened the meeting, the two members, the four members refused to break the tie, superintendent got up and said, I'm not running the meeting. And so, to prevent that from happening anymore, the chair remains the chair until a new chair is appointed. And it's pretty self-explanatory, if the chair doesn't run, if it gets beat, the vice chair gets that spot, um, and it just keeps the process in place until new people are appointed. So, I'm no longer have to run a meeting in March.
Sure.
Unless it's the chair and the vice chair.
Unless the chair and the vice chair, then we'll appoint someone. Somebody good to back them.
Does anybody have any questions on that? This first reading anyways, so. Do you want to tackle the second one at all? B E D C?
Oh, quorum? Yeah, quorum, it's pretty much self-explanatory. If, if we don't have enough people to have a meeting, physical meeting, if we don't have a meeting. Uh, if you have electronic participants, they can be added in, but we can't have a whole meeting of non-people here. We can't have an electronic meeting, can't, can't phone it in. So, there has to be a quorum here in order to have an electronic participant.
Any questions? And that was B E D C, sorry, so D C. Yeah. And then R is the, the written part of the board, actually, the rules on the secret phase. Anything we shed a light on that? Not really, just, it's really just the, is anything?
We prefer, well, sitting, Heather, Heather's also on the policy committee, and she can also add in if she wants to. Uh, the, we, we've given our, our members two mulligans, we prefer them to be here. There's a lot that goes on in a room, but if you can't be here, then during the course of, of 12 months, you can, you can use a go-to meeting or Skype twice per year. And if there's extenuating circumstances, we have a board, and probably go on allowing that to occur.
And I liked at the start, it says you actually have to be out of the district, so it's not, I didn't feel like coming in today, because my, I had that hair day, it's, I was physically out of there.
Any other questions, Heather, do you have anything you want to add?
No, that's the one I says it will.
Just a quick clarity on that, Paul. So, we'll set up a process of that, of communication. So, it'll be, you know, you get a call, you get the Skype, you get the, the meeting. We'll set up a specific method.
Right. I, I was just using those as an example, not knowing what we're going to use.
And they probably have a Plan A and a Plan B.
Yeah. Student fees, Russ, I'm going to let you handle that.
Sure. Student fees, this policy's in place, we basically talked about fees, fines, and charges. Uh, we add there that also including those fees, fines, and charges, and charges are going to be launched in our launch program, and that indebtedness will be collected, will be asked to be collected at the end of the year, and if it's not collected, we'll carry over to the next year. And we're just trying to continue the practice of making sure that things that are owed to us are given to us. You have the right to either retain your records and not transfer them, or the right to say, whatever, mix and place it.
Now, do we have a problem with that, with punches in particular, or?
We, we are having less of a problem, how's that? I think we had a little more of a problem, but with that new fee service record, that's becoming less and less, and this should tighten up even more.
And I know from personal experience, the, the My School Bucks is a great way to do it.
My School Bucks is fabulous.
So, do we need to make a motion of proposed policies, first reading, and we need these off the table?
Yes, we do.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the first readings of B, DB, board officers, B E D C, quorum, B E D C R, the rules, regulations for electronic participation in meetings, and J Q, the student fees, fines, and charges.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Paul, and a second by Jody. Any other discussion? Okay, here, none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We've reviewed public participation at board meetings, and that wasn't a hot topic in the room that we were, or I was in, but it was a discussion, essentially, we're talking about agenda, we're talking about what the public is allowed or encouraged to speak on relative to the meeting that we're holding here to conduct our business. There was no change made, and we kept the policy the same.
What was that?
With the exception of adding in.
Uh, under Board Number Two, after the fourth line, so we had on the set forth the specifics of the, of the subject to be addressed two weeks prior to the next state board meeting, so, community member, someone had something in. Under Board Number Two, after the fourth line, so you can head on this, for the specifics of the subject to be addressed, two weeks prior to the next state of board meeting, so on. Community members, someone had something they wanted, had added onto the agenda, they must contact me, that gives me enough time, because our agenda's broad, generally, we can advance to collect information, contact board members, to make the combination of the board that needs to have on the agenda, and also to give that back to the board package at a time.
Now, can I ask why the Board, the policy committee decided not to entertain having a public open session, like we discussed, you know, with restrictions?
I'm in favor of allowing or encouraging the public, the second portion of our public participation, to have a discussion on any first part of it, we'll state the agenda, second part of it, but that was, that was something that we discussed, and as a group of individuals in the policy committee, we came forth with this. Obviously, the board needs to approve it and/or modify it. So that's where we're at. Did I answer your question?
Yes. So I guess I should next state that, I think my feeling is, given that the town has a completely different policy where they let you talk during both public sessions on whatever you want, I think it's a nice compromise to keep the first one to agenda items, so we don't get off track and alter the schedule, but I don't think there's a problem with having, with reasonable restrictions of public input on other things in the second session. But I am concerned about making sure we're not mentioning people's names, or violating privacy, or things like that, but I would trust that if we put this in place, we could find a good compromise to make sure people do have the opportunity to give input, but not to violate the policy. So that would be my recommendation.
Any others have any comments?
I think that would be a fair compromise to offer, which means public input and keeping the meetings moving, and ensuring that we don't, as people said, touch on personal or personnel items, so as a chair, you'll be challenged to ensure that we don't get into those zones that no others do, because we're supposed not to. If that's the case, do we send this back to the committee to rework it based on the input, or request the committee to review it again?
What I can do is, if the committee would like, I can, wordsmith, it would be sense of the filter, I'm listening.
Yeah, I'm reading through, it's basically second two, members of, the public may offer comments on agenda items only. That's a first sentence in our policy. If someone were to make a motion to the effect that the first public comment would be agenda items only, and the second public comment would mean for anything else.
Or agenda items, too.
Or agenda items or anything else. I think that we don't need to spend another one o'clock on a Thursday afternoon to talk about it. And I think that's, the rest of it is pretty self-explanatory. We've got our fifteen minutes, each individual's entitled to three minutes of talk time, and if we spill over, the board can elect to extend on. I'm not gonna break more.
As the second member of the policy committee, in looking at the bullet point number two here, it, I would surmise that that had come to be as a result of a need. So perhaps there was a issue with personnel, personal things coming forward from the public that could infringe on the rights of our students, or our administration, or board members themselves, or deal with sensitive topics and issues that are protected by other laws, and once the cat is out of the bag with those types of comments, it's really out there, and it's recorded, it is for viewing for the public, these things are posted on YouTube, and so the provision has come to be because there was not this adherence to what is known as a modified public forum, as per the School Board Association. So the issue is if we allowed, if we discontinued or modified this provision, what we might want to consider is to accentuate the provision that the board may stop the conversation if it starts to infringe on somebody else's protected rights.
Just a point of clarification, I'm sure we have as far as the recording, the ability to bleep out before we post on YouTube if that were to happen, right? Something we could do, if somebody stood up and said-
Sure, I mean, it's always a waste of scrub things.
Okay, just to protect the privacy of the person.
I don't know what that does to people.
And can you talk, Russ, about what do other schools do? Do they typically have?
So this really is all over the board, and again, I'll bring us back to our attorney last year when they spoke at this meeting, said you don't need to have that public input, it's something that you offer to the public. And when doing so, really making sure that we are protecting the rights of students, of personnel, and anyone else involved in the district outside of this board. I worry about going down, going too far down that road, and what topics get thrown out, and not that you have to answer them, but what situations that creates when somebody comes in, they would like to talk to our computers. Well, what about computers? You're gonna say, well, we're gonna refer you back to the superintendent. Our current policy has people go to that room prior to, so that those questions can be resolved before they get to the board. So I, again, I'll go back to our attorney saying, we have a good policy, one of the things we have to do with that policy is follow our policy. We haven't, as a board, been able to follow our policy appropriately, and we haven't asked our public to follow our board appropriately. But I think if we can maybe start with following our policy, and we get comfortable with how that policy looks and how that works, then I think perhaps we could look at what provisions need to be made. Because I think, I think you're right, if we open up too much without some real specific clarification, we sort of tore the cover off. Now we have to put the cover back on, and how does that move here? So one of the things that I would recommend would be restrict our policy, let's follow our policy, let's see where that takes us three, four months down the road, and then look to make some provisions at that point based upon following the policy as soon as possible. That would be my recommendation.
If I could, I've been a board secretary on five different school boards, and I've been, son of you, the longest, going on nine years in January, actually, it's a long time. And so I've seen many things, and this has been brought up on numerous boards, and I have to say that I back Russ on this, because I know that people think that they don't have the, they don't have all the knowledge during the first public forum piece of it, but that's when they can ask the questions and go through all the different points that they wanna make, and then as the board, you can write down those or take note of that, and make sure that those questions that they have are then answered during the time on the agenda. And then at the second forum, that's when they can come back and they can talk more about it. But I've seen the same thing that Russ is saying, what ends up happening is that some things just keep getting brought up that should've gone to the principal first, or should've gone to the superintendent first, and then it just ends up being like a little bit of a free-for-all, in a sense, on certain things. So I think it is good that they're able to come to the superintendent and talk to them first about getting on the agenda about the items that-